Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November 5th, 7:00 PM meeting, 2012. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I look for a motion to go into public hearing.
So move.
Second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, posted in the Milford Daily News on October 29th, 2012, for Millville and National Grid, legal notice, Town of Millville Public Hearing. The Millville Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 5th, 2012, at 7:00 PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center at 8th Central Street in Millville, to act on a petition submitted by New England Power Company, DBA National Grid, for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, repairing, operating, and using lines for transmission of high and low electric current, data, and other intelligence -- excuse me -- with such wires to be strung across public ways between structures located on private property in the town of Millville. Any person wishing to be heard may make comments at the time and place listed above or may submit concerns in writing to the Board of Selectmen. Roland P. Barrett, Chairman, Millville Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, there were no written comments received.
Nothing, okay. So Representative for National Grid would like to...
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is David Baron and I am National Grid's Project Manager for the Interstate Reliability Project. I do have a brief slide pack. I'm happy to pass copies around. We probably don't have to go through all of it, but just to give you some background and a little bit of detail, we have a few extra copies if any of the members of the public are interested. But the project is proposing the construction of a new 345,000-volt transmission line in the states of Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Connecticut. And this project is really aimed at improving the regional reliability of the transmission bulk power network. There's some background on Slide 2 and 3, but I'd like to skip those unless you want me to go over them. But on Slide 4 really provides a snapshot of the route of the proposed transmission line, which originates in Millbury, Massachusetts. It passes through five Massachusetts communities: Millbury, Sutton, Northbridge, Uxbridge, and through the corner of Millville before it enters into North Smithfield, Rhode Island. And then it cuts west across the towns of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, and Borrowville, Rhode Island, where it enters into Connecticut. All in all, between Mass-- Rhode Island and Connecticut, it's about 75 miles. And the total cost of this project, including the transmission line and the substation components in all three states, is about $540 million. Slide 5 indicates some of the benefits and the reasons for the Interstate Reliability Project. It's really providing additional transfer capability for the movement of power across New England and in particular among the three southern New England states of Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Connecticut. And it addresses certain thermal and voltage overloads that could occur under certain system conditions. On Slide 6, a little closer view of the route of the transmission line. And again, this is through five communities in Massachusetts, and it's fully within an existing corridor, an existing right-of-way that National Grid and New England Power has held since the 19 -- actually, 1910s or 1910s. Of the $540 million overall cost, about $100 million of that is in Massachusetts, and almost $3 million of that is within Millville itself, 2.8 million in Millville. And about 15.4 miles of the route of the transmission line are in Massachusetts. On Slide 7, I provided sort of an aerial snapshot from Google Earth with a highlight in pink of the section of the transmission line that is proposed to be located in Millville. So just north of Quaker Street, crossing Quaker Street and Providence Street before it enters into North Smithfield, Rhode Island. So I think this is a little less than a half mile. I have that figure here. About three-tenths of a mile in the town of Millville. Slides 8 and 9 provide really a cross-sectional view of the right-of-way at these road crossings. That's these slides here. And this shows sort of the configuration of the right-of-way after construction of the project. What's presently out there are the two transmission lines that are on the right side of this figure. This is drawn facing south. And in the location here, where we're proposing to build the new transmission line, there's actually an old 69 KV tower line that about almost 15 years ago was decommissioned. And what we did at that time was we took down all the wires and insulators and hardware from that old line, but we left the towers in place to monument the edge of the right-of-way. And what essentially we're proposing to do when we construct the new transmission line is to really build it in the place where that old tower line presently exists. So the old tower line will be removed from this location, and the new structures are planned to be erected in their place. Slide 10 just lists some of the various agencies and authorities that we have to seek approvals for before we can construct this project everywhere, from the federal level with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, certainly at the state level with the Energy Facility Siting Board, working through the MEPA process, the DEP, right down to the local level, such as hearings tonight where we're seeking the approval to locate wires over the public way on Quaker Street and Providence Street. I think the point of this Slide 10 is really to say there are really a lot of eyes on this project, a lot of people reviewing the proposal from the environmental perspective, from the cost perspective, from the need perspective, and also a lot of opportunities as we work through this process for public input and comment. And then on Slide 11, just a very high-level timeline. Right now, we're in the permitting and licensing and engineering process. We hope to get through all the licensing by late 2013 and be in a position to start construction in early 2014. And we think we can construct the project in its entirety in about two years. So it's our goal to have the project finished and in service by December of 2015. The last slide provides contact information for our stakeholder relations manager, Margaret Neves. She's here with us tonight. She's been, her and her team, conducting extensive outreach to the towns, abutters, residents, and other stakeholders really over the past three years. But that provides Margaret's information. We also have a project website where folks can go to get additional information or submit questions or, you know, ask for additional information. So that's just a brief summary. I hope that provides the context for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do not have any questions.
I have a couple of questions that I've dotted down if I don't mind. Now, you're saying that the plan is to place the new structure upon where the old structure is. Is that your goal or is that a definite? Because I know some of those things are located in some people's, you know, yards.
Right.
So if they're meant to be moved or shifted, you're really impeding upon, you know, life as they know it.
Mm-hmm. So they'll -- the new structures will be located along that alignment of the towers in order to construct them, you know, where they may be 10 or 15 feet ahead or back of those existing towers, but on the same sort of central line, if you understand what I mean.
So you won't be going beyond the easement?
No, all the work is proposed within the existing easement.
And the current towers are on the edge of that easement?
Right, they're...
If I understand you correctly?
They're about 62 and 1/2 feet from the edge of the easement.
62 and 1/2, so...
Yep. If you look at Slide 8.
Okay.
Yep.
And is that because of possibility of collapsing to keep that a safety distance?
Oh, no, so... No, so first of all, that's the central line of the towers. Then there's three wires that make each circuit, so there's a wire that's 20 foot, 10 inches off of that central line.
Yeah.
And then, if you can imagine, these towers are located every maybe 600, 500 or 600 feet, and that's quite a spin. So we have to allow, you know, for wind displacement of the wires in different sagging tension conditions. So the project is really designed so that under any wind or weather conditions, the wire will be fully contained within the right-of-way and meet National Electrical Safety Code clearance requirements.
Okay. And I am familiar with that area because I've walked up back behind, you know, my mother-in-law-owned property with actually the easement going through, so I'm very familiar with the area.
Okay.
And I know a few years back that we had some dumping issues, and I know they were coming off Central Street, and there was a lot of, like, and even if you ride in from town and you just glance over, you can see dumping. In future, is there anything or the responsibility of National Grid in regards to dumping? I know the police had a report that was given to them a few years back, a year back. So I'm just curious, how do you deal with that? Because you do open it up and then...
Right.
And it's not, you know, it's not the people of the town, but it's construction people just coming in and dumping their stuffs. I mean, there's a few piles back up on Providence Street of debris and things of that sort.
Well, we'll certainly remove those if you point out the location to us. But I mentioned the outreach and sort of a butter contact and municipal contact we've been making for a few years now, and that's one comment we've gotten. Another comment we've gotten is, you know, ATV traffic sort of drives people batty, right? So what we've done is develop a proposal to at all road crossings, install a system of gates and guardrails and blockade. So these could be boulders, pole blocks, guardrails, wood or steel guardrails in conjunction with locking gates, so to inhibit access. So, I mean, you can never truly, particularly with ATVs, eliminate it entirely, but we can certainly take efforts, and we're planning to really restrict that. And we'll also be providing the towns with locks on those gates, so it'll be a double-locking arrangement so that the town can maintain emergency access for fire or emergency response to the right-of-way. So that's our plan to...
Okay.
And that's in conjunction with the construction of the project. But if there's an immediate issue where you're aware of dumping, certainly we can take that information tonight and address that quickly.
It's been about a year since I've been back there, but I note about a year ago there was piles, so...
Okay.
And that's when they were working on it, you know, they started clearing and doing some things back there, so it even opened up a little more, more stuffs.
Now, all this that you just said, with the dumping, as Selectman Dean said and all this stuff, is there anything in writing?
In terms of...
The gates and this and that, I mean...
Yeah, so all this...
It's all hearsay until, you know, you can put up your towers and put up your lines and doing that, and then you're gone.
Right.
And we're sitting here holding the bag, and like Jennifer said, you made all these roads and trails for all these great ATVs and dumping, and then the towns lied for a lot of this. I mean, is there anything that you're going to put in writing to say that you're going to help the towns out?
Well, hopefully, we have minutes of the meeting here tonight. National Grid's committed to being a good neighbor. You have our word on that. But all this proposal is documented and our plans are documented in the application we made to the Energy Facility Siting Board. So we'll, at the end of the day, receive an order of conditions from the Energy Facility Siting Board that says, you know, you can build the project. Hopefully, we get the order, and it's in compliance with all the information that we submitted and the plans we submitted. So yes, there are documents in writing, certainly. I'm just trying to explain what our plans are to you. So, yeah, that's all spelled out in our Energy Facility Siting Board application.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will the residents of Providence Street, Quakers Street experience a loss of power for any length of time?
No. The project can basically be built in the clear, so without any interruption to existing facilities. So there should be no interruption of power whatsoever from this project.
I see. And is there any health hazard problem that might result from it?
No, there's no health hazard. And again, a lot of information was submitted to the Energy Facility Siting Board on things like environmental impacts, noise, construction noise, EMF, and those sorts of things. So the Siting Board takes a very, very close look at this. We just the other day got our second round of data requests or interrogatories from the Siting Board. The first one we received in September was about 150 questions. The one we got last week was an additional, I think, 125 questions, Lauren, something like that. So they ask us detailed questions, and we really have to provide a lot of information. So all those topics are very well vetted through that process.
How does it affect the property value of the deposit?
With regard to property value, I mean, I'm not a real estate expert. My suspicion is that any impact to property value was occurred at the time of the construction of the original facility. So in many cases, I mean, there are existing facilities on that corridor now in many cases...
But the existing is only 115 kilovolt, and you're going to put in, what, 300 and something?
345,000 volt.
Right.
Right now, so...
It's not like you're adding another line, you're adding another three lines out of that one line.
No, it's one transmission line.
Right, but it's three times what you already got.
It has higher voltage, that's right. But again, the corridor was in place in many cases before any of the residences there. We've had facilities on that corridor and it's been in operation since, I think, 1918, that time, thereabout, so...
I think his question is, so I'm an electrician, and I understand the difference between the... I think to the naked eye is the appearance of it. I know the voltage is high or low, and without being educated in that field, you don't know what the voltage is.
Right.
But he just would like to know if, looking at it in three years when it's complete, is it going to look similar to what it looks now? I know the towers will be brand-new, but other than that, will the appearance of the tower with the three lines on look the same as it does today?
It actually should look a little bit more streamlined. The tower that's there, the old tower line I was referring to that we're going to replace, is what we call a lattice tower line, so it's one of these sort of busy erector set sort of looking towers. And what we're actually proposing to install in its place is more of a streamlined steel, two steel poles, what we call an H-frame structure. So two steel poles directly embedded in the ground with a horizontal cross arm. So in my personal opinion, it's a bit of a more modern look, a bit more streamlined. But right now, there are three sets of structures on that corridor. At the end of the project, there'll still be three sets of structures, so I don't see any significant change.
It's 30 foot higher.
It's a little bit taller, that's correct.
A little bit, 30 feet taller.
Yep.
That's a lot. Will the wires be any closer to the condos up there than they are now?
As I mentioned, the old tower line that we're taking down, we took those wires off. So in that sense, there will be wires closer to that edge of the right-of-way that, you know, aren't there now. Again, if we look at Slide 8, the central line of the new transmission line is 62 and 1/2 feet from the edge of the right-of-way. And the wire furthest closest to the edge of the right-of-way is another 20 foot, 10 inches, so let's call that 21 feet or 20 and 1/2 feet. So the closest wire would be about 42 feet from the edge of the right-of-way.
But it'll be 30 feet higher, so technically, it's further away.
It will be a little bit higher, that's right. Yep.
What about noise coming out of those wires? Right now, at night, when it's quiet, you can sit out there and you just, you hear a hum all the time. What's it going to sound like when you put in a 345 KV line?
Under normal conditions, there really shouldn't be any audible noise, the exception being when it's very, very humid or wet. You know, if it's raining, you can get essentially ionization from the water in the air. If there is audible noise that you're hearing, I'd like to, Margaret, get the gentleman's name and location because that could be a piece of hardware that's a little bit loose or something like a cracked insulator that's causing a little bit of a spark gap almost. But under normal conditions, there really shouldn't be any audible noise.
Also, what about, you guys come out every couple of years and you clear the lot, clearly overgrow clear.
That's right.
And you get this great idea of chop and drop. My yard goes through that quite a bit. And you guys just come in and you chop it and you drop it and you leave it there. So everybody's got to go out there, either move it or clean it up in trouble or just let it look like that. Is this going to involve even more chop and drop?
Well, the way you're referring to is our vegetation maintenance program. That's done on a five, typically a five-year cycle. They do do chopping or dropping lot, as you call it, and in some cases, they do leave debris. It's considered good habitat, actually.
That's not meant to be your yard.
Not for your yard, I understand that. So again, if you have an issue with that, I'm happy to take the information, and we can get that rectified. It really shouldn't be left in people's yards, I agree with you.
They have too much fork until the line, when you come out there to chop and drop. They just tell me, hey, this is a right-of-way. We have, this is almost like alley, and I have no rights, you guys have all the rights.
Okay. Well, I don't support that attitude or position, and certainly from, I can control the project and what we're going to do here. I can't really speak to the broad company maintenance policies, but certainly if you have an issue, we're happy to rectify it, Margaret. If you get the gentleman's name, we'll get that taken care of, so...
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Are there any limits to the magnetic field intensity here or higher?
No, there are no state or federal limits that have been established with magnetic fields. I think Massachusetts uses a guideline of, I want to say it's 100. Do you know the number, Lauren?
Yeah, mine has it the same, of course.
It is an issue the Siting Board's looking at. I want to say it's in the order of 100 milli-gauss is the unit of measure for magnetic field strength. And that's not a regulation, it's sort of, what they did several years ago was they looked at all the right-of-way corridors of Massachusetts and sort of saw that whatever that number is, I want to say it's around 100, was sort of the highest existing condition. So they use that as a rule of thumb and don't, you know, let us exceed that if we can avoid it. The project is well below those limits, the project as proposed. So again, it's an issue that the Siting Board's vetting very closely. We've responded to probably close to a dozen, a dozen and a half questions from the Siting Board strictly on the EMF, so it's something we're looking very closely at. But again, the magnetic field levels that are resulting from the proposed project, we've modeled it, and they're well below that sort of guideline that Massachusetts uses.
Is there a limit on how much more can be put onto that right-of-way that you have right now? This is going to be the third line. Are we looking at a fourth, fifth, sixth line in the coming future? Or is that it? You can only put on three lines on that, and then, or can you continue to go on?
We could continue. I mean, the right-of-way isn't, the easement language isn't specific as to the number of circuits. What I can tell you is that in planning this project, our planners looked out to the year 2020, and the project here satisfies all the needs in that planning horizon. So we look out 10 to 15 years, and we don't see a need for any additional project. I can't stand here and tell you that we'll never do another thing along this corridor. I mean, the right-of-way corridors that we have now are all we're ever going to have, so it's conceivable that someday, decades from now, another project could happen. I can't, I can't in good faith sort of tell you that'll never happen. But again, our planners looked out quite a number of years, and this project satisfies all those needs in the coming years that we can see.
Can you pull all your permits for the town? Is there cool volume needed permits for the town?
From this town? Well, this is, I believe, the final permit we need from Millville, or do we need zoning flowing?
Um, I think we shouldn't.
We shouldn't.
I would think you'd have to have a building permit though for all the construction, wouldn't you?
No, not typically a building permit. It's not, they're not habitable structures, so they're typically...
So the electrical permit, then?
No, not typically, no.
So there's no...
There's nothing. You go through conservation if need be to, if you're near wetlands.
Right, so we have, I think we already have an order of conditions from Millville, or if not, we've had the hearing and the order of conditions is pending. And tonight, we have the street crossing franchise hearing. Other than that...
But permission, not permit.
It's a, is it a license?
Because a permit is something that you can be on, the whole.
Okay, no.
So what you're looking for is permissions, not permits.
Okay, if that's a distinction, I don't know. Is it a license that we're seeking tonight?
This is a franchise. We would pay if the town turns it be for this area.
For franchise, okay. How much time do you expect you to be on the area between Providence Street and Quakers Street during construction? Are you looking at weeks, months?
Well, the way the project gets constructed, it's in a train of activity. So the first thing we do is put out environmental controls, hay bales, erosion control devices...
Again, those are going to go around the right-of-way area?
Those are...
Or just on your construction area?
Around construction areas and to around wetland areas to stop any sedimentation. Then we improve the access roads as necessary, place swamp mats to let the construction equipment get access across any wet areas. And then we start doing, you know, excavation for the structure holes. And so these things sort of happen in a train of activities. The next thing would be to erect structures and then, you know, string wires. So it's really going to be intermittent over the course of that two years. We're not going to be working...
Would you leave any heavy equipment in place? Well, you move on someplace and you leave an equipment behind, well, you come back to later.
No, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be the case.
So when you're not working in that area, you're going to take your heavy equipment out of there?
That's right. So it'll sort of move down the right-of-way to progressive activities. I don't mean to be saying we're going to be working at, for two years straight in this area, so it's going to be, again, we're working from Massachusetts into Rhode Island and Connecticut, and it'll be in a series of activities. So it'll be intermittent and sort of sporadic, if you will.
What about hours? You can be working from what time in the morning to what time at night?
Typical hours...
Five days, seven days?
Typical hours are 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We also plan to work some Saturdays, it would be the same hours, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Now, we usually work about a 60-hour week, so during the summer, it tends to be five, 12-hour days, so we may work 7:00 to 7:00 when there's more daylight. And in the, in the winter, when there's less daylight, we might work six, 10-hour days. So it would be, say, 7:00 to 5:00.
To piggyback on that, is there any place where the residents can go to get updates? Is there emails? Is there a website that kind of says where they are, where they're going? Is there notifications that they could sign up for to get information as to when they're coming through and when they're coming back, you know, in the next phase?
Yeah, and one of the things that Margaret Neves has actually created during her outreach efforts is a database. So we have another piece of this overall project that's actually in active construction down in Rhode Island right now. And what Margaret does is every two weeks, sends out an email to folks that, anyone that wants to provide us their email, will send out an update, and that gives a look ahead, a two-week look ahead. will send out an update and that gives a look ahead, a two-week look ahead as to the construction activities that are planned for the next two weeks, where we plan to be working and what we'll be doing. Those come out like clockwork. Really, Margaret's done a great job. Every Friday, they, uh, they come out. So anyone that wants to get that information, we can get their email address and get them on the list, including members of the town. I don't know, Margaret, if you already have folks from Millville and.
We can automatically add the town to that by weekly update.
Okay.
And also, in, in that database, um, if you're a director, but we should already have your information in that database. And if there was something that you wanted us to, you know, um, be aware of or any special conditions that we can run through our construction company, you know, we can certainly work with you on that as well.
Any more questions?
So basically, we can make up a fee?
Hard to hurt, it sounds like.
So, so we can get all our public buildings powered for free?
One, well, I guess I, we did have a briefing, uh, I wanna say it was about a year ago, with, um, the town manager, Margaret, and we met with the police chief. Um, and he actually asked us if we could donate poles to the town, which we did for the erection of antennas, I guess, for the radio system. So we did do that. And the other thing is that the two point eight million dollars really is property, uh, you know, real property that gets taxed as far as property taxes. We pay annual taxes on that. So there, there certainly is a benefit to the town from that perspective, a financial perspective.
So in other words, your property is gonna be assessed for more money now that you're updating it?
Yeah, it's gonna be two point eight million dollars of new investment in the town and that gets taxed by the town. Yep, as, as real property, yeah.
So what if all these towns are going through? What if one town says no?
At the end of the day, I think, um, we would, the fine, the sighting board has the final decision. So we would probably appeal it to the sighting board, Lauren.
It's a provision, Margaret, we can go back to the sighting board if one town did it.
So you do it anyways?
Yeah. Um, well, the, the.
Pretty much what they tell you when you cut.
The sighting board would come back here, have another hearing, go through this again, and then make a decision.
I just wanted to show that the people who came down, who expressed concerns or just listening, if they're satisfied. I, I know you.
I've been going up for twenty years.
I know you're truly not willing to be, but.
I'm at the point where I don't believe in anything they say anymore.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's your opinion.
Did you know that there was an easement through the property when you purchased it?
I did to a degree, but I guess I didn't understand exactly what they were saying. Once you live there, then you really understand what they're saying.
Right.
What they're saying is, they have total control over your property. And if you don't like it, sell it and move someplace else. I mean, every time I've gone with this, this chop and drop junk, like they said, but every five years, but every three to four years sometimes. They just destroy the hell out of the yard. And, and when you say, hey, I don't want you to do that, it's like, huh, this is our right. And they give you this, you know, you can come back to the town and ask for money off my taxes, which I tried. And the town says, no.
Um, Helen, could we have our minutes and anything that, any emails that may come from any people attached and sent over to, would it be you, the stakeholder manager? Um, so that they have it on file, so that the concerns that we did have will be addressed and that they will have, um, a paper copy.
Sure.
So if anything comes up in the future, that we know that we've, we've.
We'll just need to gather names, because it wasn't part of the record tonight, so we can do that after.
Okay.
And we can also get the locations of those dump piles that you mentioned. Actually.
They're at Quakers Street, you can't miss them.
Okay.
Well, there's something too, if you go, because my mother-in-law owned property. They only used to ride out back, um, in an old Jeep, not an ATV, but, um, we would ride out back. And, and literally, it was just big. And I know that one time it was so big that they, they had the police involved in it, because there was paper and things of that, that they were trying to track the person.
Oh, okay.
Who was doing it. So, um, so, so I know there are some that, I haven't been back there. I could check and see with some of the neighbors who do go back, but.
Okay, we'll, we'll check it out, though.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further comments or questions, uh, the board can close the public hearing and then consider the order.
Okay. So.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Sure. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, so the town of Millville Transmission Line Franchise Order of the Selectment of the Town of Millville. Petition having been filed, notice given in public, in public hearing held as provided by law. It is hereby ordered that New England Power Company, DBA National Grid, its successors and assigned, and assigned be and, and are hereby granted locations for and permission and consent to construct, maintain, repair, operate, and use lines for transmission of high and low electric current data and other intelligence upon along, upon along through, over, and across certain public ways in the town of Millville as requested in its petition dated September thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. The wires, the wires to be strung across said public, public ways between structures located on private property in the following locations. Quakers Street on map, uh, number one twenty-five. And we have also on Providence Street, map, uh, number one twenty-five also. And, uh, would anybody have any objection of not reading all the names involved? Or I will, if, if anyone would like to. Okay. Um, that's, and then the center line of the proposed transmission line across said public ways to be located not over fifty feet from the approximate location of the center line of the proposed transmission line shown on the plan attached here to entitled New England Power Company Plan to, Plan to Accompany Petition for Highway Crossing in Millville, Massachussetts. Which, which plans are incorporated herein by reference? The power, the power wires to be strung not less than twenty-eight feet from the ground above the public way and not over twelve feet, twelve wires per line to be strung from each structure across said public way. New England Power Company is, its successors and assigns shall all, shall at all times indemnify and save harmless, the town of Millville, any cost, charge, liability, or expense which, which it may incur or to which it may become liable for reason of the locations and privileges herein contained. So we're looking for most to accept everything I just read. So move. Second. Any more discussion in there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and there are two forms that I've flagged. They only require signatures of three members. My recommendation would be the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary.
So that, that's it? I guess you guys are all set? And thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too, Tom. All right, so we have only a few announcements. Uh, the first one will be, um, the trustees of the Veterans Memorial Park is holding a, an event on Sunday, November eleventh at the Veterans Memorial Park. It's for the unveiling of an inter, inter-creditive sign at Veterans Park. And the sign is going to, uh, present the history of the park from its beginning up to the present time. Um, so all, all residents are definitely invited. It's gonna be, again, November eleventh, two thousand and twelve, Sunday afternoon at noon, at noon time. And it's gonna be a nice little ceremony and, uh, any, and, any veterans especially are, are really asked to, to come. It's gonna be a nice event for, for the veterans especially. And, um, and then, of course, any other residents wishing to, um, pay some tribute to all our veterans from, uh, you know, right from the revolution to now. I mean, they've all, we've all lost family members, friends, and, and, and all of our ancestors have, have done the same. And, and they're the reason why we have such the great nation we have and, um, why days like tomorrow are, are our privilege to have. And, and it's a, it's a great, great thing as an American to, to be able to vote and have your vote counted, unlike the, uh, third world countries that you hear about all the time. So really encourage people to, to, um, come and, and show our veterans, you know, how much we do care. And, um, also, uh, if, if we could all stand right now and, um, as, as most everybody in town already knows, is Romeo Ethean had passed on October twenty-first. And, um, he was our electrical inspector, uh, our animal control, and, um, pretty much anything else he would help, he could help with. He, he was here for, uh, you know, the town, for residents needed bombing tips, gardening tips. Romeo was there. Fishing, he didn't let too many fishing secrets out, but, so if we could just stand and have a moment of silence for Romeo, I appreciate it. Thank you. So the, the town would definitely like to extend our, um, sympathy out to his family and his friends. Also, thank you so much to the emergency, emergency management department and public safety officials for their assistance in preparing for the hurricane. Thank God, we, we were much more fortunate than, than New York and, and New Jersey. And, um, and, you know, anyway, we can keep them in our thoughts and, and, you know, anybody that can, you know, do anything to, to their favorite charity to help, to help out New Jersey and New York residents and, and, you know, whatever anybody can do would be, would be a great help. And also, some good news. Congratulations to Town Constable and Flag Warden Philip Clark on the recent birth of a baby boy. So congratulations, Phil. Uh, and let's, I'm sure everybody knows, because they've been watching, uh, multiple ads and there hasn't been one Coca-Cola or Pepsi commercial in probably a month for, uh, to make way for all these, uh, politicians running for office. So I'm sure everybody knows tomorrow is, we will be voting from seven AM to eight PM. And the town offices will be closed on November twelfth in observance of Veterans Day. And that is it. I guess there was more than I thought. Okay, so now we have some minutes and warrants. October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve at six PM. Um, all were present except for Mr. Baker.
Motion approved, minutes, six PM, October fifteenth.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I do have warrants this evening. Three sets of warrants. The first are the, um, payroll deductions for the pay period ending October twenty-eighth in the amount of four thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. I have the payroll for the pay period ending November third in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. And I have the vendor warrant for checks to be dated November eighth and the amount is four hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. And I just point out that high amount, uh, is mostly due to the BMR quarterly payment of four hundred fifty-three thousand and change. So those are the three warrants.
Motion signed, the warrants.
Second. Any discussion?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have, uh, reports of the town officials and we have on the agenda, Mr. Joseph Reposa from the Finance Committee.
Joe Reposa, Finance Committee Chair. Just gonna talk as Joe tonight. First of all, I am really confounded by the fact that, um, a private email to the chair of the select board with a subject title, Road to Receivership, was out copied anyone or just, uh, looking to consult with the chair of the Finance Committee. Apparently, uh, the word has gotten out that, uh, the town is in a dizzy over the fact that, uh, the town's gonna be in receivership, go bankrupt next year and.
Where are you getting this information from?
I have an emails.
Good, I haven't heard anything about it.
This is the first I'm hearing about it, Joe, so.
Me too.
Sounds like gossip.
It's, it is.
It is, it's idle gossip. It's people stirring the soup again.
Without, uh, without foundation.
Right, so forget about it. Don't even, don't even, don't go even bother going any further than that, because all you're gonna do is rile the troops up.
Are there any names on the emails?
Not under one I sent out.
There you go. I wouldn't even entertain that, Joe.
Well, basically, um, I wanted to consult with, uh, Mr. Barrett as the result of, uh, preparing for the, uh, twenty-fourteen budget season. And, uh, the Finance Committee and myself have made some observations relative to, um, you know, a financial condition in the town. And basically, uh, I, I will reiterate what I mentioned at the all-town government meeting. Is, uh, there were basically seven points. And for the last seven years, the town's been spending more money than it's been receiving. Looking at, uh, revenues over expenditures right from the financial reports, the town spent about, uh, more than a million five hundred thousand they received in that, uh, seven-year period. The fund balance for the town is from two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve went from about two point six million dollars to one point six million dollars. So we, we've lost a million dollars in, on, on that account. Capital expenditures, we, we've been averaging about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on capital expenditures. Capital expenditures, we, we've been averaging about $150,000 a year on capital expenditures. And we really don't have a capital plan, nor an effective capital planning committee. So, it, it appears to me that that money is coming out all out of reserves. Another factor is the, the fact that, uh, the MSBA refund, which was about, about $654,000 in 2010. After we get through Special Town Meeting, uh, we'd be lucky to have a $12,000 balance in that. So we spent over $650,000 on MES water project in, in a couple of years. And, and we still continue to have issues with water at the elementary school, including the, you know, possible filtration system and the fire suppression tank.
Would you like us to do close the school?
I'm not suggesting anything. Uh, well, I'm not, I'm just making observations of what's been going on, and that we're spending more money than what we're bringing in.
This board has cut everything. Everybody's cut everything. Why don't the Finance Committee, since you're making these suggestions or accusations of how we're spending our money...
John, it's not an accusation.
I'm just saying, you're coming up...
It's not an accusation.
You made one wrong word. The point being is, you're saying things to this board and to the people and, and all the soup stirring that's going around here for what you're telling me and the rest of this board. You tell us what avenue we pick. You want us to close the school?
Well, number one...
I mean, you're right, we did spend that kind of money to try to keep the school open.
Yeah. The, I, I agree with all of that, but the fact is that you can, you can do a couple of things. You can raise revenue through taxation, through the levy. You can cut expenditures in other areas. Uh, you can do it in general government, in my estimation, but you can, you know, where, where's the next place you look at? You look at public safety. That, that's the, the second highest budget item that we have. We can't do anything about the school system. Uh, so...
The school system's set, there's nothing we can do about that. The taxation, people don't want their taxes raised. And every time we bring it up, they knock it down.
Then they should be prepared for the inevitable.
Exactly. We can cut the school.
And that was kind of the point of this whole discussion in the first place. We're heading towards the inevitable. We're trying to explain that we're heading towards the inevitable and we're getting pushed back as it being gossip. It's not gossip. It's fact.
I don't see anybody putting their name on it, Paul, okay? Oh, he's putting his name on it?
No, he's not.
It's, it, the Finance Committee is, their charter isn't to, uh, make policy. The Select Board makes the policy. With that policy, Fin, Finance Committee can make recommendations. The recommendation I come with tonight is that I would like to ask the Select Board to create some type of a task force that would consist of members from the administrative portion of this town, the executive portion of the Board of Selectmen, uh, Planning, Finance Committee, uh, maybe a seven-member task, uh, task force. Because this all has to be, uh, you know, the trend has to be reversed. And I can't, we, we, we need to involve more people, as John said, and we have to get the right people together. Otherwise, as, as Paul said, you know, we're gonna...
Basically, what they're, everybody's saying, a reality check, and it's coming sooner than everybody thinks. And that's the bottom line. And you, the Finance Committee, the Selectmen, everybody's said, "We're gonna have to cut, cut, cut." Everybody gets all upset. Well, you know what? There's no more to cut, and reality is, we're sinking. Period.
We're, uh, you know, alone, we, we're facing, um, perhaps two debt exclusions for next year, for the high school roof and wherever the decision happens to be, the elementary school on structural. But just those two debt exclusions could raise the tax rate by about a buck for 20 years.
Well, I've already seen and heard about the structural of this, of the ME school. And from what I heard from, uh, a couple of people that went up there and inspected, with the inspectors, a lot of that is a bunch of farts. It's just trying to, people trying to make money.
Yeah.
And you know what? That's why we have other people gone up there to protect the town at the best interest and came up and stated what they saw to contradict what these people are saying, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I don't disagree with, with that, but just from my observation, I know that there are structural issues with the shell of the building that needs to be addressed, with moisture leaking and leakage.
There was some leakage with the storm, but that was 'cause it was raining horizontally.
So, you know, I just bring that up.
No, I understand that. I think the board and, and yourself and everybody else, yeah, somebody, they all have to put their heads together and find out which way we're gonna go and how we're gonna spend our money. I mean, we've all said that.
You know, we, we, we can't defend this. Th, these are facts right here.
Exactly.
What I'm saying. So, we've gotta do something about it. And I'm willing to work with, with the Select Board in, in forming that task force or whatever we do. But we've been through all this in the town for the last seven years. I've lived in the town, I've attended all the town meetings, and I've never seen a plan put down, a capital plan put down. That, what we need to do is, is put the plan together, uh, share that information or make it transfer into the town residents so they can see what actually is going on in an annual town meeting, have them, you know, make those decisions. That, that's our job is, uh, it's a democracy.
Yeah, our, our job is to recommend. But at the end of the day, so, I mean, we all know we have a revenue problem, right? That's what we have. Let's call it that.
Just the Selectmen's job is set policies, the Finance Committee's job is to recommend.
Re- recommend, right? And we said, yep.
Well, why don't we put the planning board, the Finance Committee and the Selectmen in a workshop and see what we can come up with?
That's what I'm after.
That's what he wants. That's what he's here for. That's what we spoke about last night.
So, Finance Committee's at your disposal.
And also, me and Joe, me and Joe spoke last, uh...
Tuesday.
Tuesday night about, uh, maybe if we could attend Finance Committee meetings as well. And theirs are gonna be second and fourth Wednesdays, and we're first and third Thursdays. And hopefully, that would work for us so that we weren't going to meetings twice a week. We'd be going once a week, but...
I've got that scheduled.
And, and it wouldn't be, you know, like, we would have to go to every, even if a couple of us went every, to, to their meetings, you know, if we couldn't all make it. 'Cause I know, especially like Jennifer's got little kids, it's a little more difficult for her than, than us.
You, you, what if you place a rotation if you wanted to? You know, one person goes to this state, one person goes to this state, one person goes to this state.
I think then that, that'll put this board more in tune to, uh, as the budget season progresses.
Well, don't we have something on here for the budget season? Serving as a Selectman previously with other boards and other finance committees, serving on the Finance Committee and now serving back on this board, I've seen it done a variety of ways. And not that one is right or one is wrong, but I definitely have my own opinions of what the Finance Committee's job is and what the Selectmen's job is. And I think when I was on the Finance Committee, that, that board at the time was doing much more than they, they needed to be doing, 'cause I think it was being passed from the Selectmen over for them to make the decision. But, and my whole opinion is, if it's your charge, your office, your thing, we should be giving it to them. And then they'll say, "We don't have the money." Give it back to you and say, "Figure it out." And I think that's true for the elected officials, that they almost need to defend theirs with them. That's my opinion. It's not to say that it's right or wrong. Um, but I think, I know we had something on here about the budget process for this year, and maybe we really need to fine tune that prior to going in so the expectation's there.
We need to expand on what we started last year.
Right.
You know, it, not, not start over, but expand on what we, what we started as a policy last year. Because there was a couple of things, and because it was the first year of doing that that we didn't do. We didn't push back and say, "The Selectmen need to sharpen their pencil with their, with their boards a little more." Or, you know, we didn't necessarily do our due diligence when we got the numbers in order to discuss it amongst ourselves and make our recommendations and push it back.
The, the basic differences this year is that we're gonna start a little bit earlier. Hopefully, to get all the budget requests out by the first of the year, on the first of the year. And you'll have a whole month to review. Um, again, appointed official budget requests will come to your attention and, um, elected officials to the Finance Committee. And I've got that alternating schedule, as Roland mentioned, all the way through April, um, the, the end of April. I just, uh, it's ready for distribution. So I, I think it'll work a little easier, uh, this year with a little bit more time. And if we, you know, do, each do our due diligence, uh, it should be a, a good, smooth
'Cause the, the first meeting would actually be the second week of January.
Right. And that, that'll be, uh, basically to, to talk preliminaries and, and the objectives.
And if we can get the, the worksheets out to all departments and committees before January, before Christmas, really, um, and, and hopes to have them back by the, uh, the 30th of January, so February, we could start.
Right. We should have a better look at, um, revenue projections, which, you know, I hate to be the, the bearer of bad news, but I'm not seeing good signs. Last week, the, uh, the state came out with, uh, first quarter revenue, uh, numbers, and they, uh, were under the, the state's benchmark for revenue expectations. They're, and they, but they did have, uh, like, $116 million in, in surplus from the FY12 budget, uh, but they put it in stabilization. That tells me there's a concern, because last year, they shared that surplus with the towns. Remember last October? I think we got about $20,000 or so. This year, the state put it all in stabilization. And everyone's concerned with the federal sequestration that might occur. Um, I saw a letter from Dr. Fitzpatrick today, indicating, uh, saying that BVT is, um, planning on a, having a contingent, if the sequestration should get into, go into effect, that they have a contingency of a reduction of eight, 8.2% or 8.5% in their budget. So, I, I look forward to working with you all in the budget season, but, uh, honestly, you know, personally, uh, you know, we've got some work to do. We're gonna, uh, in...
We do.
Make a, a case to the town. Thank you for your attention.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's your prerogative, but if it's okay with you, I'd like to speak on something for emergency management.
I just wanna say that, um, you know, myself and, and all the rest of the emergency management team that, that staffed the office downstairs during the storm, um, you know, everything went really smoothly. We were prepared for, you know, whatever could have possibly happened with all kinds of contingencies in place. Uh, one of the things that, um, that might not be public information or might not be public knowledge is that our elementary school, very recently, um, because of Captain Inferno's insistence on it, our, our elementary school is a certified Red Cross shelter. And fortunately enough, it, it's actually a regional shelter because it's one of the few within a close radius of, of the other surrounding towns. So, that shelter actually services Bellingham, Mendon, Oxbridge, because it is the closest Red Cross certified shelter that is available. And actually, there were people that did come to the shelter, a couple from Bellingham, um, one from Oxbridge. There was actually, uh, one family that came in, they had lost power just to sit for a couple hours, recharge a cellphone, you know, get warm, get something to eat, and, you know, they were able to use the shelter for that purpose also. They ended up going back home, 'cause they had animals to take care of, but, um, you know, it was available and it was utilized, actually, and they, and it was staffed by the Red Cross. So, you know, they, they came in and, and they had dropped a trailer off with supplies. There were cots and, and milk and cereal and, and coffee and, and, you know, it was available to, to the, and the people that were there really needed it to be there. So, it was, uh, it was, it was an excellent thing. It's an excellent service that we're able to provide. And it was really, like I said, Captain Inferno's insistence on it with the Red Cross. It had been something that was in process for a long time prior to that, but had never really come to fruition until very recently.
Great. Excellent.
I have a question on similar, starting. Is there a room at the elementary school for a MMR, uh, type of installation?
You just wanna open a huge can of worms, don't you? Probably.
I like to stir a little bit.
There probably is. It's not something that we've actually looked into. Um, I mean, on a, on a different note, after spending two and a half days or two full days in that room downstairs, there will be some upgrades and changes made down there, but all within the emergency management's budget and within our own personnel. And what I mean specifically is some cleanup and some improvements to the, to the facility down there.
Okay. Uh, first public forum. Nobody? Okay. Uh, correspondence, I have one thing from Blackstone Valley Tech, uh, from Superintendent Michael Fitzpatrick. Uh, we, they, they have applied for a grant through Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the ESE program. I am writing to inform you that ESE has approved your Race to the Top Grant Application, Fund Code 201, for year, year three FY13. We are processing the grants and now, and should, you should receive your first payment within 10 days. It's a $30,000 grant that Valley Tech applied for that they, that they did receive. So that's very good news, uh, from Valley Tech. And, uh, congratulations to them for getting the grant. But I guess it's congratulations to all the towns involved that they got the grant. So, thank you, thank you for all the good work to, to Valley Tech's, uh, School Committee and Superintendent. That's all I have for correspondence, unless I missed something somewhere, but I think that was it. Appointments and resignations, we have none tonight. And then we have an Executive Secretary Report.
Um, first item, I just wanna let the board know that the underground storage tank removal at the MES is scheduled to take place this Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, I don't think the weather will be an issue with that one.
Okay.
So, hopefully at the end of the day, Wednesday, or first thing Thursday, I'll know more on what they found when they looked at that tank.
Okay.
The Chestnut Hill Road paving project is due to start tomorrow with the grinding of the existing pavement. And then I'm told that because of the weather predicted for the rest of this week, the project will likely not be finished until the end of next week.
Okay.
But again, that is weather, um, weather permitting. The Council on Aging did receive a $3,500 grant. That's the annual formula grant. And I do have the contract here for the board's signature. I would just need a vote authorizing the Chair to sign this contract.
So, hold a second. Any, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 You should have had in your mailbox a copy of an email I received from Vera Colius at CMRPC. And the subject is regional E permitting. And what CMRPC is trying to do is get together a bunch of towns to take advantage of the community innovation challenge grants that are, that have come out. The deadline, I believe, is January. And they're trying to get a regional E permitting software installed for all of the towns to use. And there is an attachment that outlines the benefits of the E permitting system. What they're looking for is any towns that are interested in joining this. They're looking for communities' interest in participating by no later than noon on the ninth of November. So it's something I would love to see, and I know in conversations I've had with our town planner, Joe Layden, I know it's something that he'd love to see as well. We currently don't have any software for permitting, which is unheard of nowadays. I think even the smallest towns out west have some type of permitting software. So what that enables the towns to do is, whether it's the Board of Health, or building, or electrical, you can pull up the property and see everything going on, whether they've got an electrical permit out or they're applying for a special permit with the planning board. It's great so that all the departments can see what's going on with that property. So it is something that, you know, I would certainly support. However, you'll see in the last full paragraph here on the first page of the email, there is gonna be, after the first year, there would likely be the cost. She says here typically ranging between eight and fifteen thousand dollars. However, there are ways to institute a user fee to offset these costs. So I just want the board to be cognizant of the fact that after the first year, if in fact they even get the grant, it wouldn't be free to us. We would have to come up with, you know, likely an annual fee. So it's certainly something to consider, but I think it would be a great asset for the town to have.
That'd be nice, but after just the discussion we just had with the finance committee.
I don't think so.
You know?
Well, it's your interest in participating, but if something, if it comes to the end, can you just not sign?
That I do not know. I think you're, if you look at the second page, she makes it sound as though if you do, if you do advise of your community's interest, this would require signature of the chairman of the board. So I tend to think once you tell them you're interested, I wanna say that you're probably stuck, because you'd be signing off on the grant application. I don't think you'd be able to back out.
Well, I'm gonna take this with me Thursday night to that meeting to get, see if I can get some more information from them on that.
But it's due this Friday.
Yeah, it would be due on Friday, so the board would really have to vote tonight if they're interested in participating.
The ninth is already this week, huh? Instead of expense we can't afford?
Yep.
And how many permits do we actually have?
That's what I'm wondering, how many permits do we give out for building, electrical, and that?
Building is about eighty a year, electrical is probably half that, about forty a year.
If you're turning around, it's user fees.
All you have to do is put all your permits that are open in this drawer, and the ones that are closed in this drawer.
Right, but...
It does give you just a big look at the property, though, you know what I mean? It takes all your departments and brings it into one file. But I don't know if we have enough applicants, enough permits per year to transfer the user fee to offset those costs. If we're looking at a hundred and fifty permits, and we're looking at eight thousand dollars minimum, and we're talking, you know, what, eighty-five?
Not a hundred dollars per permit.
Yeah, you know, people aren't gonna take our permits.
They're gonna say, no way, I'm gonna slide this one through under the radar.
You know, I...
Well...
I mean, it sounds great, and I realize how it can cut down on some things, but I worry about year two, and year three, and year four. And are you in a contract with these companies to...
Most likely.
To have that...
Can't all these boards that, excuse me, sorry. Can't all the boards that are following these permits, like the electrical inspector at building, send out emails to everybody?
We've tried that numerous times over the past several years. We've tried email communications, memos, it ends up falling apart just because of changing staff and changing board members, time constraints. It just, it never, it never works. Because unfortunately, you have to keep in mind that all of our boards right now, not only are they not on a software that we all use, but they're not even on town computers. Many of our boards and committees, you know, as you all know, they're using their personal computers still. So, I mean, we're really kinda behind.
So if you pull, if we have this system, you pull electrical permit, how does that go into that data? The electrical inspector has to put it in?
Or the secretary, right, plugs it into the software.
So we're in the same boat. It won't end up getting done?
Well, it'll still get done, but instead of just being on her computer, it'll be in a software where the Board of Health can see that it's been pulled, and the planning board can see that it's been pulled, all the departments will see, instead of her just having it on an Excel spreadsheet.
There's some technology out there within computers, for anyone working in the field that uses computers. I know, like with mine, I do a remote sign-in. I get my desktop at work, at my home. I sign in through a portal, and I get it. You know, would we be better served in years down the road to invest in that type of thing, where we have a town portal? And so if you're at home doing your planning board, you're going in. Then you have your little subgroups. We use Google Mail, so we have our groups. So within the group, I might be part of the planning board group, the FENCON group, and the Board of Slapman. And anytime I can see the documents in which they post. So there is some technology out there that if we wanna do some sharing, we can maybe invest into, like, something similar to that, or I'm sure there's a technical person that's more experienced.
Anything anywhere that has an internet or a server should be able to share with us.
So, you know, should we look at some of those things that might not necessarily be this expensive year to year to kinda solve those problems? I'm just not, I'm not sold on the E permitting, because I don't think it's going to cost effective. It's gonna go back onto our residents, and I don't think it's, at this point, there's wants and there's needs. And I see this as a want, and I don't see it as a need. And that's just my opinion on it.
I don't know, we're gonna get all the money for that whole dream.
Yeah, but if you look, if you look at the budget for the last few years, and you know, you were on the finance, some, a few of the past recent years, we just barely covered the building inspector's pay with building fees.
Yeah, the money, like I said, the money's not there.
And with this economy, and the way housing is going...
Yeah, the software is more than the building is worth.
I don't see doubling our permit fees, or permit applications, period.
Like Jennifer says, there's want and there's, you know, it just doesn't...
Yeah, I, at this time, I mean, I understand it's a great...
It's a nice concept, right, but...
I just don't think, I don't feel comfortable.
I understand. I would just be looking then for, it's just my job to bring this to your attention. I would just be looking for a motion that the board to discuss it, and if it's your choice to not proceed with it, so I can just let them know.
Make a motion, you know? Table it. Ron made a motion not to accept that it was presented, and then, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the last thing I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, I had emailed you earlier this morning. We arrived this morning to the town hall with no heat. Shortly thereafter, half of the building also lost electricity. So we're mirroring what happened about a year ago. We seem to be having these continuing issues. The service technician that did come today noted that there are significant issues with the boiler. He noted that there is a great deal of soot in the boiler room, much more than there should be. And he also said that he anticipates that there will be an issue with the compressor. And that's just from the audio, the way it sounded to him, he said it sounds like it's on his way out. So what I would like to do is have somebody come in and do a complete evaluation of that heating system, of the boiler, the compressor, and let me know what we're going to do before it's too late.
Could we possibly have a board member present during that inspection? Just to ask questions or feedback?
I would love to have a board member present.
If anyone in particular would be willing to do that.
How about you doing it, Charlie?
Some experience and background in that area.
That's his background.
I know, that's why I'm looking that way. No, I just think, you know, to have a set of ears of someone who's, this is their field, and to make sure the town's getting the best and the right thing.
Well, that's exactly, you know...
I mean, we sent our building inspector to go see Millville Elementary. I think we should get into that practice to make sure what we're spending our money on is appropriate.
Okay.
Correct way.
I don't have a problem with that, whatever.
Is it maintained once a year?
It is, and we just had the preemptive maintenance not too long ago. We had the two new oil tanks.
Do you have a description of what they did?
Sure, on the invoice, yeah, they write out everything.
And you make sure Charlie gets that, so he can see what they're doing and what they should be doing or not doing, or all the above?
We had Victory for years and years. I'm not sure if you all realize Victory isn't maintaining oil burners any longer. This was new, just starting last year. So we just recently changed vendors.
Victory out of Bellingham?
Yeah, yeah, and I think the town hall had Victory since it became the town hall of this building.
Who's our oil company?
Well, right now, we get oil through Price Right, through, you know, the oil lady.
So that's, that's the problem, is we're getting the oil cheap, but they don't have the service. It's their oil that's causing these problems. That's why Victory got out of the oil business. They don't sell oil.
Right.
Because they're maintaining these furnaces that are getting sooted up because they have someone else's oil. Usually, an oil, a person that sells oil is gonna maintain the boilers. It's tough to get somebody to get on an oil contract with them.
Well, for years, we did have Wesco. We had auto delivery with Wesco. We always locked in at the lowest price that we could. And we were receiving, you know, encouragement from finance committee, not the current sitting finance committee, but past finance committees, to go with this different system, because they felt it was, you know, a better deal for the town. So we've been with the oil lady for, I think, four years.
What's our administration fee on that?
She is not charging an administration fee for the town.
Okay.
She recommends, because I go through her as well, she recommends some guy, I can't leave information at all. Seems to be pretty reputable. That's all he actually does, too.
I believe that's probably who was here today.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Anyway, so I just wanted to let the board know that it is something, it's an ongoing issue. We will try to get more information, and I'll talk to Charlie and see when we can schedule something. And that is all I have on my report.
Okay. All right, so old business. We have the senior van agreement. And Gary Brackett called today, and he reviewed the draft that Blackstone sent. He's got multiple questions for Blackstone, and has not had the time needed to get with them on the questions he's concerned about. So requested, well, not requested, but suggested that we probably shouldn't sign the meeting, sign the contract tonight in our meeting, but to wait for the November nineteenth meeting, when we can have all the answers that he has. Plus, he's gonna ask the questions for the questions that we had. So I guess one of the holdups was the town administrator in Blackstone had a family death he had to attend to, so he was out for a little while. And we've bombarded Mr. Brackett with tons of work from all different departments in the last month. And so he's, this is the last thing we gave him, and he did start working on it, but hasn't finished, so.
So I'm gonna make a motion to table for November nineteenth meeting?
Yep. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so. Okay, MES structural conditions.
Mr. Chairman, on this semi-structural condition, I'd like to table that until we hear from the building inspector. There's no sense even to, I'd like anybody else to say something.
One and a half to one point nine million.
That's ridiculous.
Am I remembering right? That's no better than the last company.
I'll second that.
Has the process been started to address the storm damage? With insurance company?
Yeah, that was the...
No, I mean this past storm damage with the insurance company.
Oh, the past? No, that's...
Sandy.
How much did we get on shingles?
The shingles that the...
But that's gonna be a totally different claim. That's gonna be a totally different...
Totally different, totally, only related to this most recent storm. The shingles on the newest part of the roof, the insurance company had paid for the first time around, were floating up like a ducking fan.
Okay.
When the wind blew. And on one of the gate walls, we were getting water infiltration, because, like I said earlier, we're raining more constantly, because the wind was blowing so hard. So there was nothing particularly structural under normal conditions, but these were non-normal conditions.
Right.
So there were a few things, and the janitor has documentation of all that stuff, so.
Okay. You've got a motion, you've got a second. Okay, all in favor? All right. So that's tabled, until we hear from the building inspector.
And would you like to invite him to a meeting? Or do you want something in writing from him as to what his...
I think we pick him to show up. If he can come to the nineteenth meeting, that'd be good.
Are we still trying to plan with the finance and the school department?
That, I was going to bring that up tonight, but the vote was taken before I could speak.
I'm just wondering if they should be, if the building inspectors should be at that meeting. You know, because that's kinda where we're gonna be discussing everything.
Which, what meeting is that, Jennifer?
We had an email, just a proposal to meet with the school committee, the finding committee, us, in regards to the two reports on Millville Elementary's structure.
I think we're wasting our time, because I've already heard from Paul and the building inspector that a lot of this doesn't have to be.
No, but I think we need to at least prioritize what we're going to fix and what, you know, what needs immediate attention.
Well, I think if we have the meeting with the building inspector, he can outline exactly what we need, and then we can go back to them. Because what's gonna happen is we're gonna sit here going through all this stuff, and he's gonna go, no, 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 and all we have to do is this. And I think this whole thing personally got blown out of proportion. I think these guys are on a hunt that we haven't made of a lot of money, and this and that, and they wanna go do this. I talked to Paul, he stood up and advocated in front of everybody that a lot of this stuff is just, it just doesn't exist. It's, certain things are in there for a reason. Some of these things, like a crack over the window, that's settling crack. Nothing's moved. There's no structural problem with that. That's the nature of the beast. You just touch it up a little bit, and it'll be fine for the next ten years.
The problem is, I think you have to look at each of the issue and give a reason why you're not going to fix it, because if not, then you're gonna have a furnace full of soot.
That's why I understand that.
You know, or pigeons in the, and that's over here. So I'm just saying, if you're not talking about it, and you're just saying, we don't need it, then it's gonna bite us later. So I'd rather go step by step and say, that's just a crack from settling. Great, we can skip over it. But I would like to look at each of them addressed, so that five years from now, there's not another board hand going, well, why didn't they fix it five years ago? So I'm, you know, I don't wanna incur any more money later down the road. If we're gonna have, if we have to ask the townspeople for money, then make sure we have what we really need to fix.
Well, I think he already has that all documented.
Then that's what I'm saying, is we need to go through that.
It should be aligned with all the departments together.
Yeah, and that's why I think to have it addressed with everyone. The more minds, minds and conversation going on, it's gonna help.
A lot of conversation, a lot of wasted words.
Yeah, but it's still pretty hard to meet and work with.
Yep.
That's just my opinion.
So ask him, ask him to come to... Ask the building inspector if he would like to come to the elementary, or wherever they hold, we hold a meeting for the school.
Is there any particular evening that you'd like me to?
Do we wanna do a workshop in between a regular meeting, just for that issue? So it doesn't make for, you know, we're not pressed, we don't feel that, you know, that's the only topic we have. We can spend as much time as needed without feeling the need that we're gonna be sitting here until all hours at night trying to get through old business in a eleven o'clock public floor.
I definitely wouldn't wanna have it at a selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, well, we should have had a special meeting.
Yeah, just the workshop on a Monday night between, are you home every Monday?
You sure?
A thought.
Well, uh,
The next week is red trims. Twenty-sixth is really the only one because we've got, um, then we've got
November twenty-second.
Selectmen's meeting and then town meeting and then selectmen's.
November twenty-sixth. This is the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you wanted to go for, unless you wanted to wait until the first of the year.
Uh, no, I don't care, Monday the twenty-sixth is good for me.
Okay, we'll see if the school committee is
Yeah, I got something planned for, uh, New Year's.
All right.
Once a comedian always.
It'll never change.
All right, so the twenty-sixth. Couldn't let that go.
Well, after the New Year, we're all gonna be so focused on budgets, Joe.
Yep. Okay, so now that we tabled it and then talked about it quite a bit. All right, so the MES, MES health inspection report. Do I have that?
The floor, the floor in the kitchen?
Yes, this is the issue with the floor. The finance committee had requested a copy of this report as well and, um, they had suggested the possibility of having another vendor come in and provide another opinion. Um, you'll note that the vendor that provided this opinion through the school district is out of state and is also quoting for a full replacement of it.
Let me ask you a question, what was the price tag of that?
Uh, this is twenty-four thousand?
Fourteen hundred square feet, it was twenty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, good, I'll take a second, maybe even a third.
Well, just for an est- an estimate to fix the problems?
No, that was to, to fix it.
The health inspection report asked for repair of a few of the tiles. This particular vendor indicated that I guess because of the type of floor it is, it cannot be repaired, it must be replaced.
It's a solid resilient floor in the kitchen area.
I like, I, I personally, I can make a motion that we get a second opinion on.
But I, I've seen them, I've seen them repaired and of course, it doesn't look like it did twenty years ago.
Who cares?
But it's, it's not Taj Mahal. It's a, it's a school, as long as it's done right, safe and, and clean.
That goal was to strip the whole entire floor up.
We can't do that.
And start over.
We can't do that.
With a new commercial grade resilient kitchen floor.
Well, that's good, but we're not Wellesley.
Where it has to be.
Enough clean two hundred dollars a square foot.
I made a motion. All right, motion made to second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. MES oil, oil tank, we already talked on it.
Which we don't have.
Okay, we need to close a special, excuse me, a special town meeting. Excuse me, special town meeting warrants. Sorry about that.
Motion to close the warrants, second.
Uh, any discussion on that?
How many did we get in?
Uh, there'll be seven.
That we received from other departments? And then whatever we decide upon.
So that'll be a short meeting, well, you never know. But anyway, when it's financial, anything can happen.
And I have been keeping the chair of, of the finance committee up to date as they do come in, just so that he is aware of it.
All right. Okay, so.
I don't know if I have seven.
Oh, that includes yours. I think you're
Is your calendar wrong? No, it is.
All right, so. All right, so all in favor?
All right.
And, uh, just so you check your calendar, the board of selectmen and the finance committee are meeting jointly on Wednesday, the fourteenth, to go over the warrants.
Seven, seven at eight P M?
I've got six thirty.
Um, yeah, I'm not quite sure. I will do my best, I have parent teacher conferences from my workplace, so I don't know if I'll be in town. I'll have to see what my schedule looks like, I don't set it. It depends on the regular ed teachers, so I will try my best.
Okay.
Um, West Virginia.
Okay. Need the three of us, at, at least, maybe John.
Yeah.
All right, that's okay.
My regular ed teachers' schedule.
You gotta do what you gotta do.
I'm bringing all my big books.
So, board of selectmen policies. This is for the media and been in front of me all.
Are you talking about that other packet we got last week also?
Yes, there are two packets. One is all, all the policies that are already existing and in place that I just cleaned up a little bit and I'd like to put in a binder. So I'm asking the board to just, if you could review them all and I'd like to just have the board vote to accept them all because what I'd like to start doing is including the acceptance date and then if there are changes made, you know, the change dates right on the, uh, policy itself. So the first packet, as I said, was all those that are already in place and we have been utilizing. And those are the, um, appointments, certificates of appreciation, code of conduct, um, I'm sorry, not code of conduct, the emergency notification, employee dispute resolution, the legal services request, meeting agenda and public comment, the meetings in minutes, the remote participation policy, the submission of town meeting warrant articles, policy, toll days and parades and the trench permitting. So those have all been prepared and accepted by, if not this sitting board, previous sitting boards and have been in effect.
I'll be honest to say that I did read, I got them and I didn't read through them, so I prefer maybe just read, just so I can look through them again, as soon as you said and I knew what you were talking about. Realized I didn't do my homework.
I dropped the ball too.
So there are motions, motions to table those to the next meeting?
Nineteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second packet were new policies, um, that I had drafted for the board's review. One is code of conduct, declaration of local emergency, um, disposition of surplus goods and equipment, and then the most recent that I just added on is a media policy, which was discussed at the board's last meeting. So you'd also like to table those as well or?
Yes.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, the policies. So we'll go, uh, new business.
Yep, uh, the next item of new business is the septic betterment loan documents. Um, this is from the Water Solution Abatement Trust and the town accountant is looking to borrow one hundred and five thousand dollars to fund the septic betterment loan program through the board of health office and this, uh, these funds are paid back through tax dollars. So it's just borrowing and then, um, it's paid back by the residents. So I would just need a motion for the board to sign.
Have we been getting the money back? We haven't had to do any liens on any properties or anything?
Good. And three different places. And this, this has already been approved by town meeting. You wouldn't be able to do this if the town meeting didn't already authorize it, so.
So motion, uh, sign, betterment loans?
Yep, the loan documents, yep.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Budget season procedures.
Yeah, as Mr. Reposa mentioned earlier, he kind of outlined what the finance is looking to do in their, um, procedures going forward and I just questioned the board, um, how you'd like to proceed with your appointed departments. I don't believe the finance committee has plans to meet with the elected boards. I didn't know if the selectmen would like to schedule meetings with their, um, direct reports or if you would prefer to do like the finance committee is and just review the budgets first and then call them in as needed. I know in the past, the finance committee had always met with the boards and it kinda seemed like to be a good time of year to sit down and touch base with the boards as well to see what, you know, what's going on.
Personally, I think they should be there and work as a group.
I don't
Well, it's, is the selectmen looking at the appointed boards? It would be you working with them first and then whatever you decide with the board, you would turn over to the finance committee.
I think we definitely need to see the budgets beforehand so that we can be prepared with questions or concerns. I don't wanna come in that night and have to think, you know, um, so I personally would like to see them beforehand and I know, you know, you, you know, if they, if there was a reason for something, if they just wanted to do, you know, a quick little bullet point of why, that's fine and that kinda helps, but I, I do think, you know, with the level funded five percent and ten percent, that, you know, I'm sure they're gonna wanna come in to meet with us. So I don't have a problem meeting with every board unless they feel the need not to meet with us. If they submit and we say, well, basically, in the end, the finance committee and, and, you know, we're gonna send over what we're told, the five percent or ten percent cut, then that's what it's gonna be. Um, but I also think that, I know we do an all-board meeting, but I almost think, we almost need an all-board meeting just to say, listen, like, you have to stay within your budgets. You've got, you know what I mean, like, you gotta live with this budget. And whether we do that one-on-one with each board that comes in, they have to make it a real budget and not be, you know, trying to get something later down the road that's not an emergency. So, um, you know, I'd like to see the budgets beforehand and if they wanna meet, then by all means and
Sign?
I'm, I welcome them to, because that way they can't say they weren't heard.
One on one, thought.
I was, uh, tentative, tentatively planning from mid-January, uh, even before all the budgets are due in, to have an open finance committee meeting, uh, invite, um, boards and departments in, you know, for questions and the like, including the select board. So I, I've been playing with that back in my mind. Your consideration?
Yeah, but you've done that in the past and a lot of the boards don't show up. It's not like you make them.
State of the town address. That we've done once.
So if we, if we do like, we think and, and get all the budget requests in by January third, then, uh, I mean, what, if somebody's, what if somebody requests a smaller budget? Do we even have to meet? That could happen. That could happen.
Actually, somebody has requested a smaller budget.
Yeah.
Veterans Memorial Park.
Okay, see? That's what I'm talking about.
I mean, it's all gonna come down to the end of how much money we're getting and then what budget we go with. The level fund, the five percent, the ten percent, and then the shavings to get to where we need to be. I mean, I would like every board to come in and say why they, you know, of course they all want five up, you know, but we, we're not gonna be able to do that, so I think they need to just come in and say, I wanna know, like, if they cut something out of their budget, if they're five or they're ten percent, I wanna be sure that that's not something that we are mandated or we are, you know, we have a contract with and it's gonna come back later to get us. So, not that I, I don't trust them or don't believe, but I wanna just make sure their, their budget isn't going to change mid-year because something's come up that they didn't realize and maybe if we had a discussion, you know, we might've said, is that under contract? What are our obligations as a town? I think we need to do that with, with their help to make sure that that's a budget they can live with because they're gonna have to live with it, so. I know even if they ask for less, we should probably just make sure that their less is appropriate, is, is
Because some, as we know, there's a department last year that said that they were fine and they need more.
You know, whether overtime's cut or we didn't put enough in, even ourselves, we didn't put enough in for health insurance and we took somebody on or, you know, um, you know, anything can happen.
I think we usually figure for at least one extra person, right, for health?
You know, technology is, you know, what it's cracked up to be and something breaks and, you know, we, we find out that, oh, we had a, our contract, but we have a surcharge to it or something. So, you know, we just wanna make sure we cover all the bases, so.
Yeah, but I, I definitely think we should get the budget requests forms out before, before Christmas.
Can we do that?
Because, uh, think about, so, all those departments, if, if they're gonna be gone from a few days before Christmas till a few days after New Year's, who's two weeks lost?
It still amazes me that every single department, every single year, it's a surprise to them that they have to do their budget.
I know, I know.
It's a shocker, that your budgets do at the beginning of the year, oh my God, how did I not know that?
Well, I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the level funded budget that's gonna be too much of an issue. I think the five percent reduction and ten percent reduction contingency budget, budgets are gonna be quite an issue for many departments and there may be some departments that really need to sit with the board of selectmen and say, look, if you need me to cut ten percent, you need to tell me what do you want to lose, A or B.
Yep.
That, that's gonna be tough.
Maybe that's where the finance committee comes in and gives us recommendations.
No, John, that's where you
That's not, no.
You need to work with that.
Yeah, I just
You can move it around however you want, as long as the bottom line is what we need.
They're just gonna reiterate the fact that we're in the hole before we stop.
That's just the people we appoint though, right?
Yeah, right.
I can try, can't I?
Submit theirs and
You know, the more people with the more input, the way I look at it, that's why I said that.
Yeah. You definitely
I understand, Jennifer, that we make the decision. That's not where I was going with that. I was going with that with more people with more input, because bottom line, what Joe said up here tonight, that's reality. And people don't realize reality. They don't realize, like Paul just said, oh, we got a budget. Well, you know what? The budget's gonna become where there's gonna be five and ten percent and they're gonna say to us, okay, selectmen, now how are we gonna do that? Well, you're not gonna do this and that's the way it is.
Well, John, I think it's intimidating for a department head to come in amongst ten people who are saying there is no money and they have to get a clause and I, you can see the angst on their faces that they're, they're, you know, they're bothered by this. This is their, this is their career, this is their job, this is their livelihood, this is, they donate hours and time and then they've got ten eyes looking at them going, nope, nope, nope. And that can be, that can be very defeating feeling for them. So to do it in a smaller atmosphere without as much intimidation, to be like, well, let's work with you, let's make sure everything lines up and then go forward. I think it's, I think it's better management on our part of those departments to know, okay, we're going to the, now, the six of us, the department head and us five selectmen are now going to the finance and saying, this is what's gonna work and this is why it's going to work. And then it's six against, well, no offense, but it's six against five now. It's like, no, we know this can work, we've worked through it, we looked at the contracts, we know it. And then, then they have the support of their appointing figures to defend their department to the finance committee. Because I think last year it was, I think for some departments, it felt like ten against one and that's unfair.
Yep.
So that's why I say need personally go through their budget, ask a lot of questions, make sure it's gonna work and then go to the finance committee.
We already went through that last year, you know how that goes.
No, no, I know, but it's
Lot of negative. And they're intimidated by it and we all know that. But bottom line is, it is what it is and the other bad thing about it is the government mandating all these things and we don't have the money. There's another thing that's kicking us big time. And there's nothing we can do about it. People keep on asking questions, well, what happened, what if we don't do this? What if? People keep on asking questions, well, what happened, what if we don't do this, what if?
We have a budget disorder, what-if contingency for years now because we've been so desperately just trying to survive.
Exactly.
A what-if budget is when you budget for your insurance line and for every single full-time employee you have, just in case. That's a what-if budget. We haven't been doing something like that because we can't work.
So...
So we'll get those out before Christmas. We'll ask those, for those to be returned by January 30th. And then the board will have, you know, a few weeks to review those. Your first meeting with the, your first joint meeting with the finance committee is scheduled for February 20th on a Wednesday. So am I understanding that you don't find it necessary to meet with the boards or you do want to schedule that?
No, I think we, I think we should. I mean, I'd like to get their report first, but that only gives us four weeks before our meeting with them.
What we found, one of the reasons why we changed the procedure anyway is for, we'd set up a meeting with every single board and it turned out to be a lot of, I'm not going to use the term wasting time, but a lot of extra information that wasn't valuable to the budget that we spent a great deal of time and energy on that could have very easily been sent on a piece of paper and plugged into the spreadsheet. So we said, let's try something a little different where the stuff that we can't do anything about, let's plug that into the spreadsheet without having to go through it line by line. Anything that we have questions on or we think needs to be changed, then we send it back, then, you know, on specific items. Then it's not as intimidating to bring your whole budget and have it line by line by line. We've already done that.
I don't think we need to meet with building plumbing and gas unless they can, like, a couple of years ago when they're building, you know, all of a sudden they have to buy $700 worth of books every year, whatever.
See, I think just the opposite. I think it would behoove you to meet with, especially building and gas, because you've got two brand-new employees who are working with existing budgets. And I think as the managers now would be the time to sit down with those departments and say, how is it going? Is there anything we're lacking, is there anything you need?
Well, if they, if, well, they're going to look at their budget and they're going to know if they're going to need something or if they can live with it. If they can live with it, then I would think we probably wouldn't have to meet with them, but we definitely need to meet with like the...
I think what Mr. Willett said is perfectly, absolutely true for the finance committee, but I think it's a little different for the selectmen because these, the appointed boards are your direct reports. I mean, it would be, I guess it's good management to sit with them and see what's going on.
What do we do about elected boards?
I'm sorry?
Elected boards of departments.
The finance committee is doing those, so... But, you know, one that, one that comes to mind right now is the council on aging. I think you really need to sit and see what's going on over there and what they need from you. What, what does the future look like for them over there? Can we keep going with the way we have been?
Well, if we look at, if we get them by the end of the year and we meet, I'm just looking at the schedule for next year. We have like January 22nd, February 4th, the 19th of February. If you take even your six biggest departments, what are our major concerns? Who do we really need to meet with first? Meet at 6:00 on those three nights and give them each 20 minutes, just as a prelim. Like, where are we, where are we going? And if we have to call them back in, then call them back in. But meet with those first six by the time we sit down with the thing. Come on the 20th. We've already met with, you know, well, actually nine boards, right? So it would be nine boards, 20 minutes of P Street. So now you've already hit half of them and you've heard some concerns. What is the direction someone will meet with them? We can already have an idea of where our boards are going and what's going on. I mean, it's only an hour earlier for those times, but at least it's a running start on our bigger departments or departments who may be struggling to make sure we get them in, that may need more help. That's just, that's just the thought.
You are going to have a department or two that comes to you and says, I refuse to cut 10%. I can't do it.
Oh, yeah.
And you, you have to be prepared to...
Oh, I'm prepared, but...
It's easy to say no when you have no money.
Right. Tell my kids that all the time. So, let's, I mean, I know we're going to give everybody till the 30th of January, but if smaller departments...
I mean, I can get them out even earlier. I can get them out the beginning of December.
Okay, good.
And ask for them back.
Then do that.
Do that.
Come back by the 7th, meeting the 7th and then we can at least decide who we want to meet.
Then we can start making a schedule of, on January 7th, we'll put on the agenda to set up a preliminary schedule anyway for meeting with the departments. Because I'd like to be almost, if not finished, by February 20th when we meet with them.
Your parks and recreation is going to have to cut $50, $50, do you know what I mean, from their mulch? So, you know, those aren't going to be the big departments. But I think, you know, definitely our fire, those things that we have mandates in, some of our departments here who are struggling currently that we're asking to make even more cuts. So we want to make sure that it's working so we don't run into the same problem that we've run into this year.
Because a lot of, a lot of people don't understand, well, geez, why can't the fire department or police department make, make cuts? We can't, we're under a contract with the employees, so we're, and they, we know. Everybody's sitting in this room. Right.
Well, and the townspeople should know that all those contracts, that public information wasn't signed and available through the town clerk's office.
And then the only other, the big budget items for those departments is heating and fuel for the vehicles and that's out of our control too. Which theoretically, the heating and fuel, well, gasoline should be half, but that's a whole nother story I'm not going to get into because we don't have enough time tonight. That's all due to the price of fuel.
So we will get those out sooner. We'll schedule workshops. And then the one last question was, is there anything else you'd like for them to include with their budget such as backup or, you know, do you want the names and amounts of specific contracts? What each outline item is used for?
Sure.
If it's readily available, if it's going to be more work, then I think they should have it when they meet with us.
Yeah, they definitely need to justify any differences.
If they have it and they're able to pull it together, then of course I'd like it. But if it means that they're going to be stressing out and I know the end of December, we're trying to send out the first of the year tax bills and things like that, I don't want our assessors or the tax collector, you know, feeling stressed about trying to find something. But they should be prepared to have it when they meet with us if they don't, if they can't do it.
If they have some sort of email from the state saying that a new mandate that's going to cost you X amount, bring that to the meeting so we see it. Because we know those will be out.
Would the finance committee like, would you like yours going out early as well or do you want to stay on the same schedule? Just send them out early?
Can you, can you, are you tired of sending them out in December?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
That's less than we need.
That should settle that until, until we hit all the speed bumps in January, but I think that should move things along pretty good. As long as, if you just make them know, let them know that we're going to start the first of the year pretty quick with all this to make sure that the reports are ready.
I think next year we should send our budget requests out in July for the coming January.
Some towns do send them out in like August, September, very quickly.
Oh, by the way, you didn't need a budget for six months, start working on it now.
That's probably not a bad idea either, like October for us. I mean, we don't have as big a budget as other towns. All right, so anything else on that? Everybody pretty squared away with that? Okay, so we have the snow emergency parking ban. So as you all know, every year from November 15th to April 1st, the notice is posted on cable access channels to no on-street parking during snow removal. So I'm just looking for a motion to implement the snow emergency parking ban during snowplow operations on town roads effective June 15th, 2012 through April 1st, 2013.
November 15th.
All right, November. So moved. See, all right. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor. So that'll be posted on cable and posted on the bulletin board outside too.
No, it's not usually on the bulletin board. We could, we could certainly put it out there if you'd like, but it's...
I think, I think everybody knows anyway. Okay. When they see a tow truck go up to their car, they'll figure it out. No, that's not even funny. All right. So 2013 meeting dates, everybody good with that? Did everyone kind of peek at it?
We don't need to make a motion for that, right?
No.
Yeah, actually, I would like you to make it so that these are solid dates and I can post this.
Can we put July 1st as tentative? Because almost every year, everyone's out of town and we don't really have a meeting and we can put tentative on. Or is it easier to cancel it if we can't do it?
Two people are always on vacation.
So, I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out there. Is it easier to cancel it?
Um, it's very easy to cancel. We just need to write canceled on it a few days beforehand. So I, I would wait and see what the, what's going on at the end of June and see how it, how it looks. We may have to cancel it if we don't have a quorum anyway, so...
Motion to accept the meetings of, what, 2013? All the selectmen meetings.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Final public quorum? There's other people too, so...
The, for Jennifer's information, you can watch these meetings now on YouTube.
I know.
Oh, it's not yours.
No, I know.
I learned that today.
Yes, we found out at the last meeting, I think.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
Yes.
Going back to the special town meeting warrant, the board had asked me to provide information on the senior and veteran tax work-off programs.
Yes.
If you wanted to look over that and let me know if you'd like to consider that as a warrant article. We can always add that on on the 14th if you wanted to do that.
Did anyone read this? Yeah?
I haven't read nothing.
All right, so we'll table...
So I'll put that on for the 14th when you meet with the finance.
Next week.
Yeah.
All right, so that was it.
The only one last thing, I know you're anxious to leave, if those that won't be here, who won't be here on the 14th, if you'd like, I have a quick list if you want to know what the warrant articles are if you'd like me to read them off too quickly or if you don't, that's fine too.
I'm right here.
I'll just read you the money items. From the police department, $7,500 for turnout gear. From the highway department, just under $21,000 for payment number one of a three-year lease on a new dump truck. From the town clerk, she's either looking, ideally looking for $5,400 for 16 hours of clerical help, $4,050 for 12 hours or $2,700 for eight hours. From the veterans agent, $500 for a cell phone. And from the fire department, $6,000 for fire hydrant repairs. And then in unpaid bills, I've got just about $2,000 in unpaid bills. And the one item that doesn't have a dollar figure that will need some discussion from the board is the storm water management. And that's it. And of course, there is also the Fennelville Elementary School, but that's coming out of the MSBA funds for the oil tanks. And on the 14th, I will have the balances of all the fund accounts for you as well.
Okay. Excellent.
Do you think you have anything that's due for Thursday?
Of this week?
This week? I don't know. I did speak to Marilyn earlier. She said she would get them to me as soon as she could. I don't know if that means this week. But she's, we're only through August, so they're only going to be through August. September isn't going to be done, so...
Motion to adjourn. Our next, our next regular meeting will be November 19th, 2012, 7:00 PM right here at the Minas Pocahontas Center. So a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.